For live and in person. All right, this is the December 12th commission meeting. We only have one meeting in December, just so you know. And I would like to call this to order with the pledge and invocation. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the faith which stands under God and the visible. Al.
All right, it's Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask you that you ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment and that we make the best decisions this evening for our town citizens. May we honor you and all we say this evening in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Sal. Mr. McMullin.
I'm Sheriff Paul.
Here.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
We start here and Vice Mayor Satterfield. Online, but he's not going to be promoted to our center. So just let's see. So moving right on, the next thing is public forum. Anybody who wishes to speak is welcome to do so. Try to keep your comments brief. I know Ed, you want to speak? And you're signed in and Donna, you'll be after.
Great, wow. So I'm at the Council of 51 Vandermeer here in town. And the subject is the commission vote to spend $120,000 to putting the potential authorization to remove sand from Lake Apokla, lakefront in front of Mr. Christie and Mr. Britt. I'm really concerned that this expenditure benefits exclusively only Oakland residents. It may modify land outside the town boundaries in the lake. And it does not provide any general benefit to the rest of the town residents. This expenditure is especially troublesome in that other alternatives with no cost impact to the town are available to waterfront homeowners to achieve water access. For example, they could extend their docks, install floating docks, something that I would consider if I had a lakefront home, maintenance of my property. I highlight that in my opinion, this action is different from the outfall canal work previously completed. Since the canal work potentially benefits all those along the outfall canal as well as residents of John Slate. That this that action would could be considered part of the whole surface water control that Orange County is working on right now. And that I feel Oakland should be involved with. I ask that the commission consider some kind of public utilization amendment perhaps to your vote to John Slate Outfall Canal area simultaneously with the dredging, like creating a boat ramp, a boat dock, some kind of park, some kind of public access that would give all Oakland residents access to an enjoyment of Lake Apokla. We're getting a lot more residents and growth here in the town. We have very limited lake access. And this could be a very straightforward and effective way to share this expenditure of $120,000 with the rest of the residents of Oakland. So thanks, that's what I wanted to say.
And you'll give that to Elise for the record. Do you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. What I would like to suggest at this juncture is there has been a motion made to, you know, continue the work. And it takes time, you know, permits, so on and so forth. And, you know, I, you know, in the last meeting felt very strongly that we should have engineering done for this. So that's a discussion that needs to be had as well as I contacted Becky Vos and Stephanie today just to make sure that we're not doing something illegal. And while they think this is very troublesome and Stephanie, you can you can say that I'm putting words in your mouth, so.
Our analysis of the dredging project and particularly of the contract is that while there is nothing illegal in the contract and there's no law that prevents the town from entering into the contract, Becky and I had advised that it would be beneficial to have engineering on the front end of the project to ensure that there are some enforceable standards that we can, in the event that creasion causes sand to go back to where it was or that the end product isn't what was anticipated, that we wouldn't be able to do anything about that.
And in my conversation with Becky this afternoon, she feels like this is a very ill-advised move. So I don't want to, I don't want to like start a debate about this tonight. You know, we're going into the holidays and I would suggest that we figure out what we figure out along the way and by our next meeting, we can bring it up for discussion again, just to make sure that this project, I'm not trying to kill the project, though I'm not exactly for it. But I want to make sure at the very least it's bottomed up. That's all I'm asking for. So, okay.
I would like to add that you guys said that is very important that we do go back. But I don't want to kill it either. So at the end, I want to help. And we promise fix it. But yes, through our due diligence, have we signed the contract yet?
No.
Okay. So.
I, I think it would be advisable to notice this item for further discussion at a, at a later meeting and then the town commission could have a full discussion on the matter or I don't know if the, there's consensus to take any action tonight or.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think we should. I think, you know, this is a contentious subject. And while I say I don't want to kill it, I'm not necessarily in favor of it either, but I want to see where the facts lead us. So we'll probably look to put it on the first meeting of January. And hopefully we'll have the right information to have another discussion. It's not saying we're killing the vote because the vote has been made. It's just further information.
Would it be a bad thing to ask when we get a contract to have the commission review it?
Oh, for sure. We would definitely bring that before. Where we're at now is we're working with Mike, our Public Works Director, Mike Parker is working with engineer in order to modify our permits that are needed to pump that additional sand. And at the same time, they were also gonna, they were looking at the canal side, but if we want the dredging side looked at as well. That's where we're at. But right now, we're just in the process of permit modification. So if this, the commission wants to bring this back, I believe we would have time to, I mean, right now the staff is moving on the three-two vote to, to do the project. And so if the commission would like us to bring back maybe an engineering, an engineering firm, then that's most certainly something we could probably have time, we would have time for before the next, before we would start any type of work or bring any contract before the commission. So we can, what I would suggest is we, we at our, at the January meeting, that we bring back an engineering firm that is able to, to look at the project as a whole, provide us a scope of services. We now have four continuing engineers on staff on, that work with the town. So we'll bring back one of those that has the capabilities to do this. And we'll put it on as an agenda item and then we could discuss engineering if that's what the commission's desire is. And at the same point, I believe we could probably continue with the permit modification. And so that wouldn't necessarily slow that down. That takes, sometimes it takes a couple of months to, to get those from the different agencies that are needed. So we, we don't have, we're not going to sign a contract that would come back before the commission. How we're going to finance the project would all need to come back before the commission. But so we have, we do have time to bring a proposal for engineering back to the commission if that's the desire of, of the commission.
Question, Ed.
Yeah, I would really be forward that as part of that engineering study, we do something that gives all Oakland a benefit out of this expenditure and not just two lakefront homeowners. I think I, I like the two lakefront homeowners. There's nothing against them, there's no beef with them, but it's not their property. They have no limit to their, to the lake. It's right in front of their house. I don't think anybody guaranteed them that their lakefront would remain stable when they bought that property. If somebody did do that, then they're the people who should be paying $120,000 to dredge his dock. So.
We'll definitely take a look at that too. But you know, what makes me sit up and take notice is when our own town attorney says this is ill-advised. And that's not the first time she's said it.
And just keep in mind, as, as the engineer goes into the project, it will probably to resolve the entire issue would be the direction.
That's the goal.
That would be to resolve the issue in entirety there at the mouth of the canal and the sand. And so therefore may drive up.
Okay.
The costs as well.
All right, well, this is what all I was asking you for at the last meeting is we need that to our home. And this will be some time. Okay. And we don't need to vote on this. Is everybody amenable?
Okay.
Yes, yes. Okay. Good. So now we move on. Oh, Donna.
I think we're all on the same page. We're just trying to get to the, you know, to the same conclusion. I just, I just think the pathway is different. But I really feel that I think all five of us want a resolution, including staff. We're just trying to figure out how to get it.
Well, and I'm trying to figure out what's the right thing to do.
Well, even though it's a three-two, I don't think is, I think it's just semantics. How do we
Yeah.
get there and solve the problem as Andy just said. I just want to make that comment.
You're always welcome to comment, Joseph.
Okay, so of course you all probably know me. I'm Donna Reed, 100 Vandermeer. Been working on the post office issue. I want to give these to you all and then I, there's three for the side and four for me. And then I'll explain to you kind of what they are. I'm sorry that I'm just getting them to you, but you can read them later. Basically, I think we have the issue solved in how mail delivery will be done, how addressing will be done, and it's being solved from a pretty high up person in the Florida District for the post office. And so that would be good thing. And I, I do want to say we are not going to get carrier delivery this time. It doesn't need a whole change. And I personally do not believe there will ever be another three, four, seven, six, oh, zip code in a large scale project, maybe in like a house here or a house there. But that's just my own personal opinion after talking to the people we have talked to. So with all of this, I have, we have got it straightened out that the post office employee will no longer tell people when they ask, why don't we have carrier delivery? They will no longer say, just go ask the town. The post office has informed me from pretty high up that they're an autonomous, they have autonomy, they can do what they want to do. It's their business. That's how they want to run it and that's what should be said. And it should never be directed towards the town as to why we do not have carrier delivery. The town has absolutely nothing to do with it at, at all. They also, from this point forward, should not ever say that if somebody comes in and asks about a PO box or a, I don't call it a free PO box, it is a no-fee post office box. And I, I started making that differentiation because I don't want anybody to think we're getting something for free. It's not. We're getting a no-fee box because they are not providing a service. So that's just how it's written in their policy. So that's kind of what we're doing. So the other thing that we've got them to agree to do is anytime somebody moves into the town of Oakland in a three, four, seven, six, oh zip code, they will make those people aware that they have the availability of having a no-fee box and it's a size one box. So this is exactly the instructions the post office has been given in the last few days. And the person who wrote this, Robert Gascon. He is, I've been working with John McGee and Robert Stone is like one step ahead of him. And John McGee is in charge of consumer affairs for the post office in the Florida District out of Tampa. So Robert Gascon is one above him. So it was pretty high up. So he is going to be having some Zoom meetings with the people over here to make sure that they are fully on board with the process. So we have a new postmaster here. The person that was here, Bert If, he went back to Winter Garden. He is an officer in charge. He was not a postmaster. So we now have a postmaster here. His name is Pedro. He's very nice. I met him today. Very willing to work with anybody, very willing to answer any questions that you have about how anything should be done. But basically what this says, if you, a, a no-fee box will be a size one box, which is the smallest box. And so you will be assigned that box as your no-fee box. And, and then it also, if you have already a size one, then you go in there and you tell them you want to convert it to a no-fee box. They will send you, they'll, they'll do that. They'll fill out the form, help you fill out the form. Then you tell them you want a refund. They'll send you 24 months of, of your refund and they'll figure it out. So it's, it's not done just to figure out what two years are. It's how much you paid per, per month because it went up, you know, up during that time. So I think my refund was somewhere like $305. So it's a pretty decent refund. Once you fill out the paperwork for the refund, it takes a couple of days for them to figure out how much it's going to be and get it taken care of. But the refunds come from the post office over here. There are money orders and they write the money order out. So it's not something that has to be sent away and wait for it to come back. You just fill out the refund. A few days later, you go up there and say, hey, is my refund ready? And they'll check and see and they'll hand you a money right there.
Donna, the size one box, the no-fee box, that conversion from a bigger box to a smaller box.
Well, I'm getting to that.
Okay, good.
I'm getting to that because that, that's the situation I'm in. So I, I know how that works. But if the easiest process is going from a size one, if you already have a size one to a no-fee box, because those are already sized ones. The issue that I see is if you have a size two box, which a lot of people do, not many people have like the threes and the fours because those are like real high up there.
Big business.
Their business or bigger or whatever. But the size two box, the, the way that has to be done is you have to go in there. Now, like, this is what I did. I went in there. I'm keeping my size two box because it's already paid for through September of next year. And so I don't want to have a problem switching over my address just to make sure everything gets switched over. So I had to go in, apply for a no-fee box, size one. They gave me, once I applied and got the no-fee box, then I could qualify for the refund for 24 months. And then I keep my size two box and it's still paid through September of '24. So does that kind of answer your?
No, I had a different question.
Okay. So that's kind of the process. You have to, and they'll tell you, you have to, they call it canceling your size two box. But really what you're doing is you're just refilling out the paperwork and the forms. So you can keep, you can have two boxes, three boxes, however many boxes you want, but you're only going to get one. That's a no-fee box. So that is how, that's how that works. So go ahead.
Continue to pay for your size two box.
Well, you can, yes, if you decide to keep your size two box, you go ahead and you just continue to pay for it. Now, when we thought, we thought we had this solved many a times. But once we, my sister and I, and I think, I'm not sure if Ed did it because Ed, between Ed, my sister and myself, we've been kind of working with this whole issue. It's been crazy. We actually sent a, Deanna sent a SurePost from UPS. And I sent a letter, first class letter to, to myself, but it had my daughter's like return address on it. And both of those got returned. And once both of those got returned to sender, that's when this got straightened out. That's when we were able to go say, no, this is not right. So that, that's kind of how that happened. But before I talk about addressing real quick, then go ahead and.
Well, my question was, is there enough box one mailboxes?
Yeah.
So that.
If they all want to convert from two to one, if, if there's not enough, then it's probably a first come, first served.
It's, I don't think so. I haven't really, we haven't addressed that because right now they say they have enough. But it's my thought on what might happen is that they will start, if you, if you go in and they don't have any size ones and you have a size two, then they'll say.
Will they treat that size two as a size one because there's?
They'll, they'll just call it a no-fee box. But they're not going to do it randomly. I asked them about that. And they said they had too many people that had size two box that didn't make, it wasn't a good financial decision for them. I mean, I can't, you know, you can't argue that, but.
So if you don't want to give up your size two box, you just want to get a refund, you can apply for the
Group B, no-fee.
And then get your refund and then just give up your group B box.
Well, I think you could.
Yes.
I certainly, it, it's not, it, it does sound kind of crazy and we thought the same thing. But after speaking with them and, and it's kind of hard to get into the explanation, but it's more a, it's a it's just a line of progression as far as for their accounting goes and how the refunds are given and why a refund is given. So it's basically has to do with that. It doesn't, it does sound kind of crazy to us because it's just is what it is. But when you think about it as far as accounting and having to show why they gave a refund because somebody got a group B box and so on and so forth, that's what it has to do with. But yes, you could totally do that and just give whichever box up you want later. I think after hearing the way that packages will go, if you could transfer over to the no-fee box and get everything transferred over the way you want, I think that you're not going to have a difference in service. There's not going to be a difference in service. So UPS packages, FedEx, Amazon, all of those companies contract with the United States Postal Service to do what's called the last mile delivery. So they pay United States Postal Service money. Have a label put on their packages and then it can get dropped off here at the post office and then the post office handles getting it to wherever it's going to go, whichever post office box. That will continue. So the things that they say wouldn't get delivered is if it doesn't have any kind of USPS postage on it. But like FedEx and all of those, you have to have a physical address. You can't just go in and say, I'm going to send it to a post office box and they won't accept it. But for the, if you mail it from the post office, you can do that. So that's kind of, they say it, but it doesn't make sense because it's not going to happen anyway. So for packages, anytime you order anything, anytime you mail anything, anytime you give anybody your address, the, the least preferred way to do that is to put your street address only on the package or the envelope. It still will get delivered, but they have to physically look it up at the post office, which they are going to do. That's the least preferred way. So packages or let me go back to letters and stuff like that. If you can mail something with just your post office box, that's really kind of what they like. But there's a lot of places that don't accept post office boxes. So if you put, if they'll take just the post office box, that's fine. The, the way that I think everybody, and I've done reviews and I've, I mean, Kat, so I've done it this way too, is that they, you have to know that the post office read the addresses from the bottom up. So they would prefer you to put your name, then your street address, and after your street address, you can put like a hash, hashtag, and then your box number. Or what Pedro kind of likes is on the next line after your street address, put box, whatever. You don't have to put PO box, just put box or put hashtag or just write the number or like unit. It doesn't even matter. Just as long as that number is on there and then followed by Oakland, Florida, three, four, seven, six, oh. And he said today that every package that gets delivered there will get delivered to where it needs to go. So there is no, we're not going to deliver your packages all that scared half day. So we're going to close the post office. There's 50 people online. I'm a third base. Can't see them.
Specifically.
I mean, it's great, it's great.
It's, you know, it's quicker than whatever.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. It definitely is. But that's, that's everything that, what you're seeing right here is exactly what came from Mr. Gascon and what is going to be in the Zoom presentations and training. So I mean, I guess it's basically finished and done and now we just have to disseminate it, try to get.
Just need to make sure that our employees in Town Hall are versed in this.
Yeah.
So that if we have citizens come in, residents, they can help them.
And they will.
And we'll definitely, I'm looking at Jessica over here. We'll definitely put some communication out
Yes.
in the, you know, in our communication vehicles to help people understand.
Yeah. And that, and that is really important, especially for a lot of the people that don't have email or they don't, you know, some of the elderly people don't really understand how to do the applications, how to, what kind of.
More than happy to help.
You know, and, and, and on that note, if you have a group of people from the town that you're needing to have the explanation, just call me. I, I mean, I will come and talk to them about how it should be done and to make sure they're well-versed because.
Did you know Marilyn was looking for you? Ms. Ma.
No.
Okay, she's looking for you. She wants to talk to you. And I, I don't know if I had your number or not, but.
I have her number. I can share it with you.
Yeah. Yeah. And you're welcome to give her my number as well, but I will, I will help anybody that needs help. I've gone on We Are Oakland. I don't, I don't put my number out there like just in the comments. I'll PM people and I've had many people call me and say, hey, what about this or what about that? But I don't think there's going to be as many issues because before Pedro got here and before Mr. Gascon got kind of involved in this, every time somebody walked into the post office and asked about it, it was, you know, negative and you're not going to get your packages and all this, you know, stuff. And so the last time when my sister had her SurePost returned and she went in there, there was three people in there. And they were all asking her about it and they were getting their refunds and doing their stuff. And then they handed her that thing about street addressing. And then she kind of stood there and says, no, you, you do understand street addressing doesn't mean my physical address. It means using your street here. So I mean, she was, I mean, it was an interesting situation because she goes, you do know your own policy, don't you? So it was pretty, it was kind of funny, but, but that's, that's it. I think it's finished. I think it's done. I'm not going to say there's not going to be issues.
See in January.
But yeah, and Pedro is, go by and see Pedro. Make sure he knows who you are. You won't have that issue that you had that one day. He's great.
I'm surprised he didn't put one example of the preferred addresses being the 210 North 3 and then your box or number.
Yeah.
That's what they were shooting at.
That's what they were saying. That's what I, that's what I'm saying. I think a lot of this came about, well, you know, this came about when we got that thing, that pink letter in the mail. That's what kind of riled me up about all of this.
Mine was purple.
Purple, I'm sorry. You're exactly right. It was purple. But that's kind of what got me going on all of this. And I think that would be, yeah, I think, I'm not saying that that's what street addressing is. If you hear them talk about street addressing, it's using the post office box, the post office address for delivery. That is street addressing. You do not, obviously, you do not have to do that. So that's a whole kind of different thing. I just think there was a, some, maybe one or two people here that were kind of stirring the pot and kind of making, making things route up so it didn't get solved. But that, it won't continue.
Famous, especially as that's not the way it works.
Yeah. Well, now if we keep this and if anybody has a question or, you know, we, you have it right here and say, nope, this is from your supervisors. Thank you so much. Yeah. Yeah, I'll be ready for my next, I'll be watching out for my next, for my next project.
Christmas gifts that I'll be getting the refunds.
Yeah, it's a. Yeah, it's a good refund. I think it's anywhere between 250 and 340 or $50. So and with the, like, there's a lot of things that happened. Like, there's a lot of things that happened that obviously you know how it is that they don't really get out to the public. But it, this was not an easy. This was not easy.
It won't.
Yeah.
Like a Christmas.
For a lot of.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm happy about, I'm happy about that. So anyway. Yeah. Because I think there are a lot of people out there that still are under the misconception that they're not going to get their packages and stuff. So they don't really want to do anything. But the biggest thing is going to be for people with a size two switching over to a size one and that making that. Packages and stuff, so they don't really want to do anything. But the biggest thing is going to be for people with a size two switching over to a size one and that making that. Um, so anyway, Sal, you're going to.
Just I'm going to ensure that.
Yeah.
Their contact.
Yep, and my email is on there or my my phone number is four oh seven.
We being recorded.
Yes, we are.
Look at the paper over there is my phone. It's over there on that paper, but it does start with four oh seven. Yeah, well, only because somebody might go back and look at the recording. Yeah, it's over there.
To impersonate somebody.
Yeah, so.
Happened to me. Still kind of curious about that. All right, now I'm to the consent agenda unless anybody has anything else to say on the subject. Okay. Um, so do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Anything we want to pull out and talk about?
A motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Um, any comments from the audience? All in favor? Aye. So now we're to a resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen adoption of vision zero policy. Who's taking this one?
Mr. Andy.
Oh, Mr. Andy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen is adoption of a vision zero policy. Um, eliminating deaths on our transportation system requires an ambitious proactive method called the safe system approach. Which includes working on safer roads, safer vehicles, safer speeds, addressing needs of all travelers and strengthening post crash care. All these elements work together to build layers of protection into the transportation system. Metro Plan Orlando won grant funding for Vision Zero Safety Analysis, which will create a comprehensive Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. For our three county region, which includes Orange, Osceola and Seminole, as well as additional action plans tailored for each county and city. Uh, Vision Zero is an international movement to reach zero traffic fatalities across the United States. As part of this movement, the town of Oakland will be working with Metro Plan. Um, to assess transportation issues in Oakland and identify feasible safety improvements on Oakland's roadways. The end result of this data driven study will result in a Vision Zero Action Plan and upon adoption. New Oakland Safety Projects will be incorporated into the twenty. Fifty met uh metro metropolitan transportation plan for prioritization prioritization and regional funding allocations. The proposed resolution adopts the town of Oakland's zero vision policy and establishes a goal of zero traffic deaths and severe injuries. On town streets by twenty twenty-four. So basically what we're doing is is basically adopting that goal of. Of zero traffic fatalities uh by twenty twenty-four, by twenty forty. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three thirteen. Um, is before you and also attached to some information on what exactly it is. Uh, what is vision zero? Um, and basically what will take place is uh the town will get a study. From an engineer uh at no cost. It's all data driven on streets in Oakland and they'll identify those. Streets that are that are the least safe or or have the highest traffic accidents and then they'll come back and establish a plan.
Hello.
The town and then that would be incorporated into the. Uh, Metro Plan's twenty fifty. Plan as well. So the hopes is is that the after this uh. After the town cooperates in this is that they'll come back with funding at some sort uh through the federal government. So um before you this evening, um Madam Mayor, you have resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen and I'll let you read that if you'd like or if you'd like to handle that. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three is a resolution of the town of Oakland adopting a vision zero policy. Uh, the background I presented to you pretty much specifies what's in the ordinance. And the town uh commits to a goal of zero traffic deaths and severe injuries on town streets by twenty forty and the town submits. And the town uh supports the efforts of the uh. Metro Metro Plan and Vision Zero. So that uh. I'll turn it back to the mayor for approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
You can vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. So anybody interested in making a motion?
I'll give a voting to accept. Twenty twenty-three dash thirteen adoption of a vision zero policy.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments at the table? Any questions or comments from the audience? Bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Uh-huh. I wanted to add a comment to it because I was part of that Metro Plan as I go through the.
You sit on that.
Yes, right, excellent. So.
Yes.
Based on that, um, they brought up the town of Oakland as as and the roundabout. You know, the stripes that we have and the walk as an example and.
Part of the rest of the mayors and commissioners who are part of it. And.
Some of the data that we got for trying to get to zero uh deaths.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, as we speak in central Florida, there's five deaths, um, five people die a day.
Wow.
Every single day, five people pass away. Central Florida, the tri-count, Osceola.
Yeah, we're one of the top offenders. We're one of the top offenders.
Correct, not the town.
No.
So. Or it's kind of correct, correct.
So um best foot forward, bike forward, right, best foot, bike forward. Patrick, I identify some of the. Street crossings that we have right now, top street, you know, with that, you know. I also brought up the future cross of the off cards because they're talking about everything except off cards. And I said, that's going to be big. It's already in central Florida, big. It's a big, I'll look into a study to bring signs, help us with a with a design or. Safety on those crossways for us. I just want to bring that up because that's.
That's awesome.
Well.
See, um, you know, and it's worthwhile. This is extra work that everybody, all the commissioners do. But it's worthwhile. It brings us advantages and assets to the town. So um. And the other um. Thought I was having is have we shared with them or is it appropriate to share with them our complete street plans?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we wanted to example.
So there's only in capital cities who get involved, but they've been encouraged with the rest of the city because they've just fallen dead years, but. For us, they made an example saying, Oakland is our nerve with us. They're already proud of that. They're going to say that in front of.
Are we? Definitely. Okay, I didn't know. I didn't call for a vote, did I? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we already.
We already voted?
I'm not.
Oh, we did?
So, Dave.
Yeah.
Well, at least I'm not out here by myself. Oh, did we vote? Okay, so this is I'm really excited about this is um. There's a roundabout design that all of you should have in front of you. Um, that will be for the new roundabouts. This was done by Joe Allery. Uh, we wanted some of the things that I think he took into consideration was. That it should be simple enough to take care of. And um. But, you know, show people that they are in Oakland. So I'm interested to see if you guys like it or not.
I don't like it.
Oh, fine.
Of it.
I think it's awesome personally. What do you think, Joseph?
I want to get something, some, see when they put it in.
Yeah.
Other cities have Claremont and. You know, they have signs on fifty.
I think this is going to look good. I think it's going to be, you know, people will see it. What do you think, Chief?
I think that instead of moving the cameras from Long Beach to there to be able to monitor it to make sure people don't.
Yes. Yep.
Sad that.
Well, sad when people pull up all your carrots and let them die in the curb garden. You know? Why? Why would someone do that?
We're going to add lighting to this.
Does it have light?
Well, the we didn't, we didn't install conduit for lighting uh specifically. We installed conduit for water or whatever we might want to put out there and. Um, honestly, if you want to put lighting, probably could.
Probably.
Long Sid Stark Sky compliant.
Obviously.
Not people who.
Way it's not lighting, it's color nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it needs lighting.
Mm-hmm, just. Someone's driving at Bart, they could see the acorn.
Mm-hmm. And I think they'll even be able to see it from fifty, I hope. So. Okay, well, we would like lighting. Do we agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a vote on this? I think we do. Yes, so. Who wants to make a motion?
That we add uh that's light. Don't go say acorn with dark compliance.
Yes.
Okay, I need a second. Second?
Yeah.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments at the table?
We have a face of town of Oakland.
Andy? I thought it would be east west is my was my thought, but I could be wrong.
Can be fair.
That's probably east west.
Because when you enter the roundabout, you'll see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
When you enter from either side of Oakland Avenue.
It's east west.
Well, I guess Oakland Avenue becomes a. Two, like a forty-five degree angle, so you. Doesn't do it outside, I guess.
Why don't um, why don't we say?
And officer? It's it's brown.
But it's only two sides with the town of Oakland. The other two just have an acorn.
Could it turn? Um. I was just thinking if we could stretch the letters out, so it would cover both sides. I mean, it's going west on Oakland Avenue, you leave it that coming.
Right.
We're coming in. So hey, each. Two Oakland Avenue, that would be good. And coming off of fifty, that that would be good. Most people would think it would be weird to have those two faces and the other two. Uh, not. For the.
So here's what I propose is that we can pass the motion that we like the roundabout design. And you can amend it, Sal, to say that we will work with Joe Allery. To bring back a placement. Because that's a good question.
It is a good question. Because we could do a mock mock letters after the acorn.
Joe, Joe will figure it out for us and bring it back to us, right, Andy?
Correct. So the placement of the letters will be in a discussion with our design.
So you have that amended motion?
You could probably just scratch out and then maybe just put open, 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 open.
Then they'll start calling it city later on, Andy.
We don't want them to call us the city.
It's amended motion, please, if I may. I think a new motion would be appropriate.
Okay.
Just to um a motion to work.
Just let this one die.
Yes, and a motion to work with Joe and our coastal positioning and and bring back the final.
Okay.
Final proposition.
So uh, I'll make a motion to accept this design with the acorn. With the future uh. Design of the town of Oakland lettering placement uh per Joe Allery. Discussion and. Mockup.
I'm shocked.
Okay, is that clear as mud? Um. Anybody in the audience?
With the lighting, with the lighting.
With lighting. Anybody in the audience have something to say?
Let's get her down.
That's all in favor? I love it. It will be great. Oh. Town manager, do you have anything?
Yes, a big thank you to all the staff that volunteered. Um, especially the. Community outreach from our work staff for working uh together to make Santa's Lane a successful event. You guys did an excellent job. It was. Well, and it was well organized. Thank you. Public work. Thank you. Uh, to our uh. Cultural Center and Community Outreach Director Jessica Lovejoy. Our staff. Um, and the only other announcement I have before the holidays is uh wish everybody a Merry Christmas and be safe and. Um, our offices will be closed on Monday, December twenty-fifth and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth for the Christmas holiday. And then we'll be closed on Monday, January first for the new year.
Excellent.
Hmm.
School parade.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Oh, yes, somewhere. And then we also have some really exciting news is that the Oakland Area Charter School received an A. Um, we're now on the A school. And um, so we're proud of the efforts of our charter school and the and the town. Um, uh, and and that the it's especially important for the kids that go there and their parents. And so it's got a waiting list to get in and. I can only imagine it's going to get longer. So um, doing a great job. Um, the town's doing a great job over at the school and thanks for the mayor and commission's. Um, support uh. At the school. So I have evening and we'll be putting something out on social media as well.
Well, and Santa's Lane, you think staff, but Santa's Lane was just fabulous.
Right.
Really good. So. Anyway, um, Sal, you have anything?
Uh, ditto on Merry Christmas and thank you for the, you know, thank you. Thank all the staff and so.
Just felt like a salute.
Always does.
Decorations. And uh, again, thank you to the staff. The event was awesome. There was a lot more people I felt like than it would last you and they was pretty. He was everybody dancing, great. I talked to a lot of vendors and they were happy that they were selling.
They were making.
So they're they're usually the vendors are like, let's see what happens, but it's becoming such a big turnout that the vendors are. Are good. They all made. They'll come back.
And. Farmers market is this Thursday.
Yes.
So.
We got a Merry Christmas.
Merry Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Rick?
Just Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all and don't forget to go to Heritage Center and vote on your favorite Christmas tree.
I I voted, my husband has voted. I tried not to do any more than one. Though there were many choices. Joseph?
Uh, just one quick note. Um, we know session starts in January.
Yes.
Um, but um, the legislator, they they they're already busy. So like tomorrow, they're looking at a short term rental bill agenda to to address that. So. What makes them change possible, makes them changes. And so I just want to make sure, you know, it's not going to affect us that much uh right now. But we have, yeah, right, could, but we we know that the legislature has done some things. That has, I don't know, you know.
Form six.
Right, exactly. So I just want to make sure that we. Uh, say a breast or everything that's going on and stay diligent, even though it's the holiday season, I'm for now. I guess unfortunately, the state legislator, later stateers are busy. Um, making some changes before we even get into.
So and if we don't know about it.
Right, right. You get to Tallahassee in January and they already had things already set. Because I know they're looking at the budget. I was talking to James Harris the other day. They're looking at setting the budget already or particularly getting close to that. So there's a lot going on in Tallahassee that I just, and I know Elise does a great job when she sees some hot buttons that's in our way. Just making sure that we stay on.
Oh, and you know.
Budget requests.
For sure.
Coming on board.
We have, but we have James, we have Gonster. Um, we've got people looking out for us in the chamber. We're on the chamber's position paper.
Mm-hmm.
For our request. So, yeah, but it you can't have too many eyes on.
No, 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 yeah, you know, like I said, they have a a committee, the city is looking at short rental, um, short term rental bill on tomorrow. And uh, you never know what else they're going to be looking at over the next couple of weeks or when January.
All the stuff they want to have overlooked.
Exactly, yeah, and have set before we even get there. So.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we keep our our ears and eyes, you know. Ready um for the session.
And we're headed up there. We're already registered. Andy got us hotel rooms.
Into January.
January, so.
So other than that, happy holidays. Um, yeah. That's what we have.
I think we've done good work this year.
Yeah.
And um, continued to work on that. We have election coming up. And. You know, it's it'll all be very interesting and um. There is a retirement uh reception in March for me. So and a passing of the gavel. So. That'll be happening. Other than that, same to everybody. Happy holidays. Appreciate all your hard work. And we will see you in New Year.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's seven fifty-two P M.